We all stand.
We gather this evening to make decisions to help the city of Canby thrive and prosper and ask for guidance in this endeavor in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it was a dark and stormy night, and we all came out. Good for us. First item is citizen input on non-agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience that would like, that has an issue that is not on the agenda at this time? We have the minutes from the last meeting, January 13th, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business.
Push my button, there is none.
There is none, okay. No new business. So now we move into the public hearing portion. So to testify, please fill out a little card there on the back there that look like this, generally look like this. And so if you haven't done that, now would be a great time to do that. The matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. If you wish to testify on this matter, please fill out the public testimony card and give it to the recording secretary. At the appropriate time when your name is called, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, address, and interest in the matter. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. You may be limited by time for your presentation. Generally, the applicant will have a total of 15 minutes to speak. The proponents will be given five minutes each, the opponents will be given five minutes each, and those thought to be neutral on the matter will be given five minutes each. The applicant will then have 10 minutes for rebuttal. All questions must be directed through the chair. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access and to become a part of the record. All written testimony received both for and against prior to the hearing shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria contained as indicated by in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, or the applicable land use regulations which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. Everyone present is encouraged to testify even if it is only to concur with previous testimony. At this time, I would ask that any member of the hearing body who has a conflict of interest to please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict and whether you intend to participate in or abstain from hearing the present matter. Also, if any member of the hearing body has had ex parte contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and extent of such contact at this time. Jeff?
Just a note that I ride by this site on my bike on a pretty regular basis.
Is it a good bike? All right. Does any member of the audience have any questions for any of the commissioners regarding conflict of interest or ex parte contact? Okay. Public hearing will be conducted as follows. First, we'll have the staff report. Who's giving the staff report this evening? Okay. Then there will be some questions, and then I will open the hearing to the public for testimony. Again, the applicant will have about 15 minutes. Proponents, not more than five minutes each, opponents, not more than five minutes each, and those that are neutral, not more than five minutes each with 10 minutes set aside for the applicant for rebuttal. At that time, we will close the public testimony, questions if any by the hearing body, and then we will discuss and deliberate, and there will be no additional testimony unless specifically allowed by the chair. We will render a decision at the close of the hearing or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Anyone have any questions? Okay. It's all you. All of you.
Are we on? We're on. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Sandy Freund with the City of Canby Planning Department. And I just would like to do housekeeping real quick. We got a comment letter that was received January 21st that you'll find at your places there, and it was in support of this project. And that's from Ms. Kathleen Polly at 12678 South New Era Road, Morgan City. So...my notes aren't showing up. One moment, please. They haven't been registered. No. F5. C. No, it's not doing it. Beautiful. It doesn't do it. That's not...you know, it shows on the sides. It's a view. Okay. It's blanked out. Where? Here? I know. It's not good.
Jason, you can do your interpretation of Louis Louis at this time.
She'll present her view.
Quick song.
There it is. Thank you. Sorry about that, technical difficulties. Okay, let's rock and roll. Next slide. Okay, thank you. This is a request by the applicant, VLMK, and they're in the audience tonight, Colby and Jason, to construct a 174,000 square foot manufacturing and warehouse facility with associated office and storage space for Stanton Furniture, who is relocating from the city of Tualatin to Canby. There will be two employee shifts, one from 5:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and the second shift from 3:30 p.m. to midnight. The slide you're looking at is the schematic of the proposed site. The light green is all landscaping that you'll see around the site. The project proposes 35 loading berths, 34 to 35, and 196 parking spaces. These are the applicable criteria and regulations reviewed for this project, and they can be found on page three of your packet, planning commission packet. This is the subject site within the yellow box, and the site is located at 23849 South Malino Road, and it's approximately 15.84 acres and zoned light industrial within the industrial overlay zone. The site is currently developed with one single-family residence, and there's existing agricultural uses as well. So again, the site's in yellow. Immediately abutting the site, and I see if I can use the pointer here. Immediately abutting the site to the west is a single-family residence and some outbuildings. And the other residences on this site to the west abut Sequoia Parkway and South Township Road, except for this northern piece, which is not developed, it has some agricultural uses, and there's a home right here. These sites right adjacent to the property are within unincorporated Clackamas County. To the east are existing residences with associated agricultural uses. They're all located within unincorporated county as well. The closest resident to the site, which is approximately right here, is approximately 165 feet due west from the property line of the subject site. And the distance from this home to the portion of the site that's going to be developed, which is this two-thirds portion, but the main building is going to be in this location, is approximately 200 feet, 250 feet away as the crow flies, if you will. This slide represents the overall layout of the warehouse on-site with the associated parking. The light green again represents the landscaped areas. Internal truck circulation will be from counterclockwise motion, this way. Access to the site is provided at two points, from South Malino and one from southeast Fourth Avenue, which will only have emergency access until full street improvements can be constructed, or rather are constructed. The applicant will be required to construct the half-street improvements along southwest Fourth Avenue, then to South Malino and to South Township Road, and also dedicate right of way along South Township Road. The conditions of approval address each road for their improvements, and those can be found on pages 13 through 17 of your staff report packet. The project is consistent with the anticipated light industrial uses of manufacturing and warehousing. The building is proposed to be 36 feet tall, which is under the allowed maximum of 45 feet high. Parking required is 174 spaces. The applicant has proposed 196 spaces. The traffic study, which is also included in your packet, has identified a total of 460 daily vehicle trips, which includes 64 a.m. peak hour trips and 69 p.m. peak hour trips, and of those would be 40 truck trips, as identified in the traffic study. And that traffic study's on page 124 of the planning commission packet for those trips. The project is not anticipated to trigger unacceptable levels of service at the studied intersections within the traffic study. The extension of southeast Fourth Avenue will also include half-street improvements to east Malino, or improvements east to Malino Drive. Staff did receive conditions of approval from the city engineer, Clackamas County Transportation, and Canby Fire, and those have been incorporated into the conditions of approval section of the staff report, and that can be found starting on page 13 of your packet. Staff also did receive two comment letters, one in support with a suggestion to construct more schools in Canby, and the second from residents across South Malino Road to the east of the project site, and their concerns included project lighting and noise impacts from the project. And staff has addressed their concerns in detail on page 12 of the staff report. These are some renderings that the applicants have sent to me, so it's part of their presentation, but we'll incorporate it here. This is a rendering, if you were standing in the parking lot of the proposed project area, looking north from inside the parking lot, and Malino is on the right side of the rendering where this row of trees are. There's 35 truck loading berths that start right adjacent to the office area, and the actual loading docks against the building are approximately 130 feet away from Malino, as measured out from the road. Because the site will ultimately be seven to 12 feet below street grade from Malino in conjunction with the proposed retaining wall, which is right along here, and distance of the loading berths from South Malino, the applicant is confident potential noise impacts will be mitigated. This is another rendering from a pedestrian point of view and/or standing in the street, looking south along Malino and the project on the west side of one person standing there.
Sandy?
Yes.
You mean South Malino Road, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Not Malino itself, which is quite a distance away.
Standing on South Malino Road, looking south. Thank you. All project lighting, there's, excuse me, there's proposed to be four street pole lights along South Malino Road fronting the project, as well as internal lighting, and all street lighting must comply with the standards of section 16.43 of the planning ordinance, and they're also conditioned as such. And that also includes downshielding the lights so as to prevent spill-over glare, light trespass, if you will. And one more rendering here, it's one more perspective, as if somebody were standing on South Malino Road looking west towards the building. The standard conditions of approval have been provided as they relate to new development within the industrial park. There are specific conditions related to all road improvements, including right-of-way dedication and half-street construction, and those can be found on pages 13 through 17 of the staff report. Also, a preliminary photometric plan has been provided by the applicant, and that's in Exhibit C of the site plan set, which is on page 88 of your packet. Staff recommends the planning commission approve case file DR 19-03 for Stanton Furniture, subject to the identified conditions of approval as presented. And before I conclude my presentation, for just a note on the conditions on page 16, Condition 34, second line references Condition 32 above, it should reference Condition 33 And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'm open for questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And if you would like me to put a specific rendering up, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Jeff?
First, thank you for the package, very well prepared. It's obviously a big package, a lot of work, really appreciate it. Wanted to make sure we got that out. I failed to mention that at the last meeting.
Thank you.
We tend to forget how much work is involved in this.
And the table of contents, we thought that would be helpful.
Yes, it was very helpful, as a matter of fact. I made a printout of that, everything else is on the pad, but I printed out the table of contents. I've got a few questions and comments, and one is a question. In a number of places, particularly during the pre-approval meeting, partitioning was mentioned as a potential possibility. Has a partition occurred, or is it underway?
So, at the pre-application conference meeting, the project was proposed and presented to have a partition with it on the southern half of the site, the southern third, rather, and the application was not submitted with this application. So we thought it was going to be concurrently submitted, and it was not, and I don't know the status as to why or when. So there are limits to this development, two-thirds down, South Malino Road, and then you have the piece of property that won't be developed at this point that abuts South Township Road.
A comment related to that is that, you know, if there is a partitioning based on our, I think, our most recent code changes, that becomes a type-two process, I think. And to me, that, when we have something of this complexity, having a type-two go in concurrent with a type-three is kind of confusing to me and to the public, I'm sure. So, type-two being a planning department approval direct through their submittal, type-three is where it comes through this body.
So with the partitions being a type-two now, typically if they're submitted concurrently with other land use applications, the more strict of the applications, i.e. the one that has to come to the planning commission as a public hearing, the lesser application will piggyback with that and come as one package. So you would have heard the partition had it been submitted concurrently with this.
Okay.
When a type-two is submitted, however, there is still public notice that's required, 300-foot public notice, and we still take public comment from folks, and the staff report's made available if requested, and those decisions can still be appealed to the planning commission so that you would still have a chance to hear it if somebody wanted to appeal it that had standing to appeal it.
Related to that, there was some mention in the document about deferral of improvements on...
Condition 34.
Yeah, on Township and on...and these were mentioned, I believe, in the pre-application by Mr. Nelson, and I'm wondering, are there any deferrals anticipated, or are we going ahead with all the improvements? Were you anticipating?
Short answer, yes, there's a deferral. In this instance, Condition 34 was crafted to read that the half-street improvements to be constructed along South Township Road would occur either at the time of partition of that property, or when that portion of the property is developed, whichever occurs first.
That excludes the intersection, correct? We're still going to do the intersection for the radiusing of the...
Yes, that's right. The radius is going to happen, yes, absolutely.
So partitioning could trigger that improvement, not...
Yes.
Very good.
Well, the turning radius will be triggered with this project.
No, I understand, but the remainder of the improvement would be triggered by improvement.
Yes, that's right. Yes.
I have one other comment, and then I want to let everybody else have a chance, and then I got a couple more questions. Comment is on acronyms.
Yes.
Particularly the traffic, the TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis. I've been doing this for 10 years, and I still run into stuff I don't understand, and it really bugs me when I see somebody put a title of a page up with an acronym, no explanation and no definition in the document that I can find. And I found four of those in the TIA.
What page did you find that on?
127, 157, 166, 168. The acronyms are HCM, two of them I figured out.
Right.
And then AWCS, SC, and TWSC. Those may be completely obvious to a person who prepared this report, but to a dummy like me, not so.
Well, and so we don't have control over the traffic engineers, unfortunately, and so they prepared the traffic study, and transportation planning is alphabet soup, as folks are concerned.
Hence, it's just a comment to you, Sandra, but I think, I think that somebody, and I'm looking out to the engineer and the purchaser of this, we need to expect a little bit more from these folks. They're not writing it for themselves, they're writing for the good of the public, and we need to be able to understand and read them.
And we can mention that to them.
And it's, it's not being well done here. Needs to, they need to up their game. I'll turn it back, Mr. Chairman, and I've got a couple more questions, but...
Any questions from this end? Eric? So Jeff, if you have more questions, you're still...
Okay. The next one is, once again, I feel like I'm picking on staff here, and I don't really mean to. There seem to be more than the usual number of conditions here than what I've seen typically, and that being there's 76 conditions.
We had a good discussion about that.
Okay? And I note that 21 of them are related to fire and utility.
That's right.
And I note that many of them are related to a document that CFD very helpfully and rigorously provided that says this is what we need. My question is, is any of this codified? I mean, I'm sure some of it is. I hate to have us, you, being serving this document, serving as an interpreter of somebody else's code, when we can't cite the code. And if Canby Fire has a code, why shouldn't they submit that? And if they don't have a code, I'd suggest they get something written, as in that summary document for manufacturing and commercial. I'm not talking anything elaborate, but I get a little uncomfortable when I'm reading, you know, "subject to the fire marshal approval, fire marshal approval, fire marshal approval with unspecified regulations." And I understand the fire code is fairly complicated, and we're very lucky to have very competent fire marshals that help us with all of this, but I'd like to see a little bit more in the future, not in this case, refine here, but just something for the staff to look out for in terms of trying to keep the number of conditions down, perhaps by having a little bit better documentation from other sources.
Can I respond to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so in my efforts to improve communications coordination with our reviewing agencies, it's really important that we capture their requirements, their conditions, in this document that comes before the public hearing, before the public, because this becomes the official document then. And so each agency submitted their conditions to me, and I believe the fire marshal did say that he is, the source reference is Chapter 33 of the fire code, and there was another reference to another code. And so what I had him do was to specifically spell out what he was looking for, because it's in this here then, and then they have to meet with the fire marshal and/or the author of the other conditions to make sure those conditions are being satisfied per their requirements. So they're not in our code, and we're not pulling their code into here, but merely referencing that they have to comply with their code.
Well, I'm going to offer that. I think they're being too vague in their references.
Too vague.
Because Chapter 33 is for safety during construction, which is important.
Yes, and I spoke to him about that.
And combustible dust is Chapter 22, which is also important, but there are many other things that they're covering here that they're asking for, that it's, you know, it's a policy that they have, and I understand it, and I'm not questioning the need for it, but it just kind of feels like we're...I love seeing their documents that this is what we want, and so you can refer to that, and that's the source of many of these requirements.
It is, it is in here, their document, but I felt legally for planning, we have to capture it in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Sandy, I'm not, I think you've done an excellent job here. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm not criticizing staff here at all. I guess, I guess raising a concern that there's quite a high burden here for staff when it comes to fire code, and so it's a concern I have, and that's all I have.
Okay. Any more questions, follow-up?
I don't know if this really has anything to do with what Jeff was talking about, but I noticed that the elevation that you showed up there, that had it, you said seven to 12 feet from the elevation of South Malino Road.
Right here. Yeah. Yeah.
Correct.
From the street grade.
So, I mean, that looks good and everything, but is there any, is there anything that in terms of study of sound that would have something more than just what it looks like? Has there been anything done for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because I just didn't, no, I know there were neighbors that were sort of concerned about that, and I thought that would be kind of something to maybe look into, or at least I didn't know. I know there's a bazillion things that have already gone into this.
And there is noise attenuation that the block wall provides, the retaining wall, the distance, and so on and so forth. And one important note I do need to make is that I understand there's concern about the backup beepers, and we can't really regulate that. That's OSHA requirement by commercial drivers, and so that's...
And they have a certain decibel that they have to meet, minimum, and then there's a maximum as well, as I understand. But also on this building, a lot of the sound, obviously, as they're backing up, would be reflective, you know, somewhat off of the building.
Sure, sure.
So I just didn't know if there were considerations for that or anything. But it does look, I mean, I like the fact that it's down from the road, and I think the grade goes up towards the neighbors, to the east it is.
Right.
So, I mean, it appears good, but of course, it's sound.
It is sound. Valid.
Thank you, Sandy. Excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
So we will move on to the presentation by the proponent, by Stan Furniture. If you will state your name and address.
Good, yeah.
For the record, that would be great.
Good evening.
Thank you, Sandy, excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
So we will move on to the presentation by the proponent, by the, by Stan Furniture. If you will state your name and address.
Good, yeah.
For the record, that would be great.
Good evening.
Mike is on.
My name is Jason Salin, with VLMK Engineering and Design. Address is 3933 Southwest Kelly, Portland, Oregon, 97239. So, short of Sandy's presentation, a couple of things I suppose I can add. I know that we had neighborhood meeting, and many of the neighborhood, neighbors to the east had shown up to review the project and give us their input as well. Obviously, the site is zoned for, for this use, is common with other developments that's already occurring in the area. You know, with the topography of the, of the site, you know, we've done our best to ensure that we've shielded the property from, from adjacent agricultural uses, with it setting down to where it's at, as well as providing the landscape coverage along the frontage. I mean, one thing that we have, do have to consider is sightline, because most of the truck traffic will be entering onto Malino. Regardless of the situation of the building, you know, access to the property is limited by Malino Road in particular. So, we do know that trucks will be entering and exiting the property from Malino Road, most of that traffic's going to be during the day, so, you know, with any business, normal operations would have employees coming and going during the day. This property and development and business also has a night shift, so there will be employees arriving and leaving at nighttime. Our assumption is they're going to be courteous and not be having any noise that would fall outside the allowable regulations within the city of Canby. That said, the businesses obviously bring a lot of jobs to Canby, which, you know, the opportunity for growth, which is, I'm assuming, why Canby created this industrial park, is, is why you, some of the, some of the things that you want to have in, in these developments. I think the initial requirement was 10 employees per acre, and this, this development far exceeds that. So, the, the normal condition that was in place before is not really applicable to this, because we're bringing so many employees to the area. With that, obviously, there's, there's traffic that comes with that, but I'm assumption, my assumption again is that was the intent of the planning in the city at that time to bring development to the community. Let's just think if there's anything else I can add to that. Were there any questions from staff outside of maybe what Sandy presented for you guys? We try to do our best to convey with the elevations what, what you will likely see once, once the property's developed.
I have a question regarding the, the storage area, that looks like it runs along the Fourth Street frontage. You have a, that looks like it's specified as a lumber storage area?
Correct.
Do you expect any barrels of organic solvents, finishes, anything like that to be stored out in this area?
No, I believe most of that's for lumber storage, for building the frames of the furniture, for their sectional pieces and their recliners and such. I don't believe that they have really any finished furniture that they deal with, it's mostly all upholstered furniture.
Mainly, I'm concerned about the organic solvents, paint thinners, adhesives, paints that, you know, I mean, the latex and PVA stuff will have to be stored inside, because it gets ruined in a freeze, but...
Got it.
Sometimes organic solvents are just stored on barrels on a rack outside, and my concern is mainly if, you know, there should be some damage or vandalism or something, that these materials are contained and don't make it into the, into the drywells and into our groundwater.
Got it.
But if, if that's only lumber storage, there's sprinklers and everything else, sounds like it's just fine.
And, and I'm sure they have, I mean, glues and such that go along with their production activities that'll all be in compliance with, you know, the requirements of the code.
As long as it's inside the walls, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Jeff? Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask you again about bike racks and access. You are within code, and so this is a comment, not a direction. Your pla, your public plaza, is that where you've put your employee bike racks?
Well, again, with the previous application that I brought to you a couple weeks ago, it was our assumption that, that it may have made sense to put bike racks in that area, but we do know that those are going to have to be moved to adjacent to the, the primary entrance. And in addition, some of those will probably move inside, because that way you're not having, some people who are avid cyclists don't like storing their bikes outside.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did have a question about traffic. So it sounds to me like when you have shift change is, which is going to be between 3:00 and 3:30, that sounds to me that, in my mind, that's when you're going to have the most traffic coming and going for employees.
Correct.
So that's when people are going to be accessing 99 to get to, because I, I go on South Malino Road all the time. That's, that's going to present a lot of traffic on 99. Is that your interpretation as well?
Yeah, I think two-thirds of the employee count that they anticipate is going to be during that day shift, so morning and early, or I guess late afternoon for those employees leaving. Everything that's been at least conveyed to us in the traffic study, which I will add that we did not prepare.
I know that.
The assumption is that most of those traffic counts are well within the limitations of the roadways in those areas and service levels. So, I guess, and so many questions, yes, that's...
And when we're, when, on the trucks, now, when would they be loading, when, when would they be doing their loading onto the trucks, and what time in the morning would they be leaving?
I'm not sure of the specifics of that, I think the truck count was at roughly 40, and most of those would be during, during the daytime. And now, I believe those are intermittent throughout the day, depending on when products are arriving and, and leaving. If you don't mind, I can ask the...
Sure.
Okay.
Hey Brad, can you comment on that?
If you could come up and name an address, all for the record.
I told him he wouldn't have to, so...
Oh, really? We're getting those artist sketches right now, you know?
Yes.
The NSA's all over it.
Yeah, okay. I'm Brad Ream with Stanton, and the address is 12120 Northeast Red Hills Road, Woodburn. Trucks, we'll have about three a day receiving materials, and then outbound is a lot less than that. It's only about eight to 10 trucks outbound. Tractor trailers and then bobtails, we have, I'd guess, around eight to 10 also.
So when your trucks and employees are leaving, I, I'm, again, I think that logic tells me that they'll be coming from various Oregon City, Portland, some from Canby...
Woodburn.
Woodburn, yeah. So they'll be using 99. And so combine that with our new neighbors, Columbia Distributing, adding 1,200 or 1,400 car and truck trips per day. You know, I'm, I'm very concerned about the traffic, and so are they, do you anticipate going, people getting from, I suppose that they would do it, the easiest route, the path of least resistance, so they'll be using side streets, neighborhood streets, to avoid 99? So, I'm uncomfortable, got to tell you, I'm uncomfortable with how the, the traffic is going to play out. So, just as a comment, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, the, the trucks are throughout the, the day, and the employees, we actually stagger the shift, some start at 5:00 AM and some at 5:30, and so even all of the day shift employees, which is right now around 1:90, they don't even, you know, all pull in at the exact same time, so hopefully that makes it a little less congestive.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we will now...
Can I make one comment? So we were looking for clarity on the condition for South Malino improvements. It was our understanding from the pre-app that, that the, the furman of the sidewalk and the landscaping along the undeveloped portion would be allowed until development or partition of that property. We do understand the full half-street improvements on Fourth Avenue, South Malino from Fourth Avenue to the undeveloped portion, but it was our understanding, at least with initial comments from the county, that they would accept curb gutter half-street without the landscape strip and sidewalks, since there would be no development on that piece at this time. So that would be my only comment, is that maybe we could get that clarified for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, it's so funny, Brian and I were just talking about that earlier this afternoon. So condition 34, it does mention the taper, the five-foot planter strip and the six-foot concrete sidewalk for the entirety of South Malino Road. However, the taper, if you look at the site plan, the sidewalk tapers and ends here at the limits of development, and then when this portion is developed, the sidewalk will continue in the planter strip and those improvements. So that was, needs to be adjusted in the condition.
Sandy, can you give you some clarity on that?
So we're, we're agreeing that...
We're agreeing with you, Jason.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I've got two people that would like to speak in support of this project. I have, not only do I have the letter from Kathleen Polly, but I have a card here that says Kathleen would like to have a few words. Kathleen, you would step forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Kathleen Polly. I live at 12678 South New Era Road. That's an Oregon City address. I own land adjacent to Fourth Avenue. My piece is already developed, and I am a lifelong Canby area resident. The letter that I wrote to you folks, I also sent to the city council and the mayor. I realize that history is just that, history, it's in the past, but I would offer just a little bit about timeframe. The city of Canby, Clackamas County, and the state of Oregon had an agreement on Fourth Avenue that took part of the burden of constructing Fourth Avenue, this piece of it, off of the buyers and current landowners, so that it wasn't all being, the burden wasn't all on the new people coming in. That timeframe, it was, the part that I know about was during the nine years that we were trying to make a deal with Portland Bottling, and that deal fell through basically because it got bigger and some of the other landowners didn't want to sell. But I just wanted to, let's see, that land deal fell through in 2017. It wa, I don't know when the deal was originally made, but it did, it was intact for all of the nine years that we were in the process of planning for that project. And again, like the letter said, I would encourage city council and planning commission and mayor all to at least be aware of previous history, because it can't, it can affect your decisions. I am very much in favor of Stanton and Caruso coming in and Columbia doing the park right, and if we're going to do it, we, we need to encourage it. And I have no problems with what's going on, I just really think that you ought to at least research whether that, whether some of that money could still be available on the streets.
Any questions?
I'm curious if staff has any kind of response about that.
Me too.
So, and I may turn it to Brian, just for the historic part. The half-street improvements that are going to be required of this project are at the westernmost portion of this site, heading east to Malino, South Malino Road, and those would just be half-street improvements. And although the applicant has an accessway and a driveway proposed along southeast Fourth Avenue, we have to restrict that access to emergency access only until the full width of that street is constructed. So there are half-streets, and then across the street, the north side, when that develops, that half-street, and that has come down from the county. So the applicant is aware of that. I'm not sure if perhaps Ms. Polly's referring to the portion west of this site for southeast Fourth, as it goes from Sequoia heading east.
I am, I have land that is on the corner of Sequoia and Fourth Avenue.
So right here.
And I am discussing, or I'm talking about, from the end of the street improvement on Fourth...
Mm-hmm, right here.
To Malino Road.
Okay.
That all was part of the deal with the state.
Okay. And I'm going to let Brian talk about the state component of that.
Yes, you, we remember that very well, and the city was quite proud in that we had secured the grant, a state grant, to help facilitate the construction of southeast Fourth Avenue, all the way from Sequoia to Malino. But after the, that grant was based upon the jobs that would be brought to the community from the land use deal that fell through, and we were able to keep that going for two years afterwards, at which time it extinguished itself. We did not find another land use in that timeframe, so it disappeared. And so our current economic development director is continually researching and looking for the, those opportunities where we get a big enough proposed industrial development that would bring jobs to the community that would qualify. But those take quite some time to get into place, and so apparently was not possible for this particular, for both Caruso and Stanton.
Even between the two of them.
Yeah, I don't know the particulars on how exactly those, and plus, you know, they're competitive, and whether the same grant is available each year, depending on what you have, I, I don't know those questions.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Scott Gestafson. Name and address, please.
I'm Scott Gestafson, 23885 South Flat Road here in Canby, and I'm a neighbor just to the east, and I had basically emailed my statements in, and so the staff has pretty much dealt with those. Thank you, staff, appreciate that. And so I, my comments are, are going to be shorter, because I guess I did it that way, and it worked. My concern, being just to the east and probably the neighbor, well, there's several of us that are affected, I'm the closest, yeah, right there, is the, the berm that I was referring to in my comments that I sent to staff would have been more like Canby disposal, you're familiar with their development, where the berm is significant. In fact, I've lived in Canby for many years, and when that was, when the council, when the Planning Commission then made that a condition, I was like, wow, that, I've never seen anything like that, that seems a little onerous on them. But how that played out, I think, is actually pretty wonderful. It's up there, it kind of hides their activities, there's a school, you know, two schools on one side, and, and, you know, traffic and residential areas, and so I thought, you know, if, if the owners could somehow even come up... And so I thought, you know, if, if the owners could somehow even come up higher, even from where they're at now, that that might be the best option in terms of deflecting light, noise, and, you know, making our existence a little better. We like living close to town. I am a proponent of, of good development. I think this is a, a nice building, gentlemen. And it looks like they're doing a, you know, a good job. I think the, the bar might be a little higher on that berm. I guess is, is my point. And I've been staring at the picture over here, trying to get an idea of, you know, what that elevation looks like and how meaningful that would be to us. And I, I can't tell. I just, you know, without being there and, you know, seeing how far down the building's going to be compared to where our, our five acres is, it's just really difficult to tell. And so I guess what I'm going to ask you commissioners is please don't undershoot on that. If, if there's a way to make that berm higher and maybe move it back so it doesn't affect their sightline for their truck traffic and that kind of thing coming out, I would appreciate that. And the last thing I wanted to say is that I intend to be a good neighbor. Like I said, I like living close to town. This is not something, the only thing that surprised me about this is it happened so quickly. When we bought the acreage, we thought, you know, the industrial park would be much further out and, you know, we'd have a lot of time. But, you know, it, it is industrial, so I get that. And, and here we are. So, and by the way, thank you for all of your volunteer efforts on behalf of the city.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's what I had.
Time and tides wait for no man, so.
I have a quick question for you, sir. So the, a lot of times the issues with sound are line of sight issues, and you really feel like you don't have any negative impacts from Canby excavating with the air berm the way it is right now?
Canby excavating?
No, he's talking about recycling or...
Canby disposal, sorry.
And what was your question?
As the, the berm, you, you just feel like that inhibits a lot more sound and you don't notice any...
I, I think it does. I mean, that's my, you know, we have one shot at this. And I think a berm that's a little higher would be helpful to our neighborhood. And, and beyond that, I, you know, it's, the die is cast here, the, you know, the, the truck traffic is on the east side of the building and, you know, their, their landscape is there. And all the things you'd want to see in a, in a nice development are there. And I, I think that is probably the only thing left in terms of what I had asked you to consider that I would ask you not to undershoot on.
So maybe the, the developer can address that in his rebuttal remarks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, it's hard for me to get a concept of, of actually what the elevations look like, but it's good that it's lower and not higher.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, we will now hear from, we have a couple opponents. First, we'll hear from Scott Brauner. I hope I got your name correctly.
(inaudible).
Okay, all right. I aim to please. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Scott Brauner, 23905 South Blount Road, Canby. I just have a couple comments for the planning committee. Listening to the proposal so far, I think it's important to note that when we had our neighborhood meeting, there were closing three sites for Stanton to move to one location. This building has 34 bays, truck bays, but we're saying there's only going to be 40 trucks a day. There really isn't a, a bigger traffic safety plan when you look at Caruso, Columbia, Stanton. All this traffic is going to be on Millano. They've got no place to go. Three to five years for any kind of access to 99E. And how many accidents happen on Haynes in 99? How many people have died there? How about Township and Millano? How many accidents happen there? This building is pushed back as so they don't have to develop Township, the intersection there. That, all that traffic has to go somewhere. All those people, we're talking 1300 to 1500 cars a day with those three new businesses there. And we know this is going to happen, but we haven't actually addressed that. We're just, hey, let's just sell this property, let's get people to move here. What worries me the most is when we look at these buildings and the buildings and the people moving there, we're going to bring all these jobs to Canby. But what do those jobs pay? Can you afford to live in Canby making $12.75 an hour? Are you going to hire people from Canby? No, we're closing three businesses and moving into one. So those people are just transient, coming to Canby. We've got great places to go, Taco Bell. We don't have any restaurants. We don't have the infrastructure. We have a small community center. We have a pool that I learned how to swim in 50 years ago. Schools are overcrowded. Our utility rates are lower than PGE, so we encourage these businesses to come here. Our tax rates are lower, so we encourage these businesses to come here. Concrete filled up, buildings go up, people influx into the area, but they're transient. They don't do anything for the city. And as a planning commission, you have to look at those things and say, hey, what are we actually doing for the community here? We're just bringing people in, but are we, are we really investing in Canby? Or do we want to look like Tuolatin? Is that what we want to look like, 99W? Because that's what it's going to look like. It's hard now even to get from Oregon City to Canby at 5:00. There's so much traffic. Add 1400, 1500 cars to that. With very few lights on 99E, no traffic safety plan in place, no access to 99 from Sequoia or Fourth, three to five years in development. And then if we're going to develop this, we should develop it all the way to Township. So we have a, a, an area where people can actually ride their bikes, walk, but it's just little pieces developed. And then it stops. And then there's, here's another area that it's not safe to bike there. If you're, Jeff, if you're a biker, do you want to bike on an area that doesn't have a bike lane? You want to bike around Township and Millano? I don't. I grew up here. My grandparents, my great-grandparents grew up, grew up here. And you can't drive on those roads without thinking, what is the impact going to be here? It's huge. And yeah, we have lighting, but if you drive by Columbia now, you can see those lights. You're not supposed to be able to see the bulb, but you can see them. You can't look up because it'll blind you driving on Millano. I've been working with Brian with American Steel, trying to get them to turn their lights down because it floods our entire neighborhood out there. And this, and as Scott Gustafson said, although this building sits down, those backup alarms are going to bounce off that 35-foot building right back east again. And what we asked them in the community meeting was, could you please take that building and rotate it so that all faces town and doesn't face us? We know that it's coming. We know that we're going to be out eventually. We're phase three of the Canby Light Industrials area. So at some point, there's not going to be any farms out there anymore. But we're paving off over this beautiful farmland. It's the, it's supposed to be the, what are we, the, we're the Garden City? Where, where's that at? Because people in town don't know what's happening until you drive out here. And then you just have all this business and all this traffic and no way to, nobody to take care of it. I just think it's important to think about those things when you're doing businesses like this. Are these, are these family wage jobs? Are they not family wage jobs? Is it worth bringing those in here if we're not investing in the city? And is it worth having all that traffic without having a traffic safety plan in place? So those people are going to be safe coming and going from their homes. I drive it every day. Traffic's horrible. It's only going to get worse. But if we're, if we're smart about developing it and we develop all the Millano Road and all the Township Road, and we have that access to 99 where we have lights on where Sequoia's going to come out and where Haynes is now where there's no lights, if those things are in place before these buildings open their doors, then the public's safe. But the public's not safe now because those things didn't happen. And we're, what, three, four months away from Columbia Distributing opening their doors? And where are those trucks going to go? Where's that traffic going to go? They're going to come on, they're going to go on the side streets, they're going to show up on Blount where we live. And that's an unincorporated, it's a, it's basically a car gravel road. You used to be able to walk down there. I don't walk my dog on that road anymore. I don't get anywhere near Township. I don't let my children go anywhere near Township. No, my children are in their twenties now, so they're not little anymore. But, but still, it's just something to think about when you're approving these things. Like, look at the big picture, look at the long run, not this short goal right here, which is, hey, it's a quick money grab, we're going to, we're going to make some money to the city coffers. And let's not forget what happened at Columbia. They're going to ask for a tax referral on that property. Not for all of it, but for some of it. And those are essential funds. We have a water problem in Canby. Can't drink it. I have well water, I can drink that. I won't drink anything in town. We have a septic and sewer problem. What do we do with our solid waste? We truck it out of Canby and spread it on farmers' fields. Can't get near it for a year. That's what happens with the cake from the Canby disposal, wastewater disposal plant. We have a fire department, it's poorly staffed. Great people, great chief, but they don't have enough equipment to handle all these kind of businesses. Police departments overburden parks that you can't use. I, I grew up going to the Canby Community Park with my family. I won't go there now. There's syringes all over the ground, parking lots not paved, there's no access to the river, it's dirty. The one off of Knights Bridge, same way. Can't use that park. We're, we're not investing in the city. We develop big parcels of property, doesn't do anything for us. Even the residential areas, teeny tiny little park, 2,000 homes. So let's look at the big picture of things before we make decisions. Let's make sure that the lighting is correct. Let's make sure that the sound is right, it's going to bounce off that. Easy to move this building so it pushes in toward the west and doesn't push out to the east. Everything off of Blount Road, that's all a protected swale for wildlife. There's birds out there every day watching birds. There's bald eagles that live in the trees in my backyard. But that noise will drive them away. It's going to bounce off that building and it's going to shoot right towards us in the east. All that's going to go away eventually if we don't look at the big picture now. All right, that's all I got.
Any questions? Question? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, I have Brenda Gunderson. An awful lot of people living on Blount Road there.
We're a noisy bunch.
You are, rabble-rousers. What are we going to do, you know?
Brenda Gunderson, 23951 South Blount Road, Canby, Oregon. We live, yeah, on the piece facing Blount. My concern again is also traffic. We do know that when roads get busy, people find alternative ways to get from A to B. And we expect that Millano will become very busy. The people that travel Millano will avoid it like the plague because of the big construction at the other end. And we suspect they will wind up on Blount. An unapproved road with no center line, marginal maintenance, not that that's your fault because it's a county road, but we expect that the traffic that would have traveled on Millano will be discouraged and they will travel on Blount. And that will destroy our sad little road even more than it is now. And I'm wondering if there is any possibility of mitigating that kind of traffic impact on a road that's not even anywhere close to this development? Speed bumps, signage, a better traffic plan for vehicles that would be on Millano, faster ways to get out to 99 sooner than the proposed length of time that it takes to build that road out to 99 that's already on the books. For this kind of volume of construction, for the amount of traffic that is going to be generated by these three businesses, is there not any way at all that the road to 99 could be sped up to make that whole system work more smoothly? Having huge trucks competing in multiple directions on Millano, ending up on Township, which is hardly big enough to cope, much less on our little street, just because they just can't compete with the amount of other traffic there?
Any questions? Questions? Okay, thank you very much. So those are all, that's all the testimony cards that I have. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against? This is your last opportunity. Okay, so the applicant has ten minutes to maybe address some of the issues. Again, if you please state your name and address.
Jason Salin, VLMK Engineering and Design, 3933 Southwest Kelly, Portland, Oregon, 97239. Obviously, there's a lot of motion associated with development in, in areas like this. I can only speak to what's allowed and address the, the conditions of approval and the code itself. I mean, we proposed a project that we feel meets the intent of the code and the allowed use for the property. We do know that there's some limitations to the current roadway based on just other properties that aren't ready to develop, that won't allow access. We know that when that does develop, those, those, some of those street or traffic concerns will be alleviated. But like with anything, you know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg. You need development to occur to participate and create these roadways. And sometimes owners aren't ready to do that. So until they are, some of those improvements will have to wait. And then also you have to deal with the fact that, you know, the community itself is trying to pay for some of those improvements and alleviate some of those issues. And I know that the city of Canby is working on, on many of those traffic concerns. They've, many of the conditions are dictating how we maneuver on those properties, you know, particularly with the Haynes Road limitation and, and keeping those, at least residences, protected from truck traffic out that way. So the general intent is that the truck traffic and, and employee traffic is being generated through Sequoia Parkway through the industrial park. Granted, there's going to be employees coming from all different directions. We don't, you know, dictate where those employees live. With regards to the employment, you know, there's, I'm sure, entire demographics of people who live in Canby from, you know, low income to high income. The intent of any business is to, you know, bring in employees and they spend their money here and contribute to the community the best way they can. So outside of just the general approval of the project based on the criteria of your code, I think we meet that. And outside of that, I have no further comments.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'll close the public testimony. And we'll have any, I think we've asked all the questions that we're going to ask unless... Do you have other questions for staff?
Question?
Okay.
Maybe we can answer this. I know that we talked about the connection to 99 before, and I don't know if we've ever heard any kind of definitive timeframe. Do we have any kind of more update to that?
I'll start with the update and hand off to Brian if he, he knows more. But my recent conversations with DKS a week and a half ago were that ODOT is now reviewing the alternative route out to 99. And as soon as we get that back from them, we'll be pushing through the amendment to the transportation system plan, the current 2010 TSP, to get that going. And then also this year, we're going to apply for a grant again to update the entire TSP for the next planning horizon of 20 years because it's good through 2030, which is fast approaching. And I don't know if Brian has more to add or not.
Just mentioned, late last week, we did hear from ODOT about a review of our proposal to extend Walnut Street to 99E. And they said it looked very promising. There are a lot of steps to go through to get the actual road permits to connect to the highway. And so we have yet to talk to them about that. And that was a part of us processing our TSP amendment to add this new route to the highway from our industrial park because the current route is in the TSP is called Auto Road, and this is a new alignment. And so it's different enough that we wanted to amend our TSP that we currently have to substitute the new alignment. Once ODOT thought it was okay from... to substitute the new alignment once ODOT thought it was okay from the other. And that's an important step because it will give us some potential funding avenue through our own transportation SDC fees if we can get that transportation amendment done for that alignment. So that's one critical funding aspect. And we're continuing to look for other funding sources, which we're pretty sure we'll need, at least if we try to get it built in a fairly rapid time period. Because we don't have the money to build it all at once. But there's lots of steps left. Securing more right-of-way, making more, the engineering design plans, planning not only for the road but for the infrastructure, the water and sewer that will serve the 100 acres on either side of that road that will be in the concept planning stage. And there are developers in that area that are just chomping at the bit to have that road finalized so that they can start planning their 100 acres for development on either side of that extension to the highway. So there's a lot going on with that particular area. And we're also just started, commissioned a short study with our traffic engineers to find out just when will that connection be needed? When, how can we avoid a de facto moratorium on new development within our industrial park? Because the level of service on the existing roads will go below what we deem to be acceptable by our level of service standards. So we're checking into that so that we can anticipate when are we going to get a development that actually causes that true traffic problem that most likely will be ODOT telling us that, no, too much traffic now going to Highway 99E. We can't handle it. And that's what everybody's been talking about. And that could come. But we want to find out more about that. So we're having a little quick study done to tell us that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, so just in your experience, because I'm new at this. But in your experience, Brian, you've been doing this for a while. What's the reality of something like that connecting to 99 any time in the next five years? Because this sounds like a giant sort of thing.
Yeah, I think five years is realistic. But I can't give you any guarantees whether that's going to happen or not.
Because I do sympathize with the people in this community talking about the traffic situation. Because I also drive these roads. And so when you see this issue occurring and then all of a sudden we have all this stuff in front of us, it is kind of like, it's tough to kind of go, well, what are we going to do? Because what I understand is that the truck traffic from both, well, actually from the Caruso project is being diverted onto Sequoia and Walnut. Is that correct?
Right.
When they go down Walnut, where are they going to go from there? Are they going to backtrack?
When they go out to Walnut, they will turn left to go to...
Onto Sequoia.
To Sequoia.
Back onto Sequoia. So then on Stanton Furniture, they're coming out, going south on South Malino.
That's right.
Coming back on Township and then back on Sequoia.
Right.
Okay, so because currently right now, I know that the intersection at South Malino and Haynes, I guess, is pretty pitiful for trucks. I don't think that's even a possibility at this point. So potentially that alleviates some concern that there, it wouldn't be any truck traffic necessarily going that direction. But it still does mean that everybody's going out into one spot on 99.
Right.
Any further questions or comments?
I have one. The traffic studies for all of the projects that are involved in the industrial park right now, are they, they're pretty much in isolation? They're not considered an aggregate until the sites actually become active?
No, probably two, maybe a year and a half ago. We made sure that each study builds upon the next one. And so in the Stanton traffic study specific, well, what we wanted to look at is those nearby intersections that have a potential to be impacted by the development. And in this case, we made sure that the Highway 99E and Sequoia intersection was part of the study. And they said with the Caruso and the Stanton project, it did not lower the level of service of that intersection below an accepted level. It incrementally is getting it closer to that level.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Okay, so it's time to make a decision. So start down there with Mr. Hutchinson. What is your feeling on this project?
I'm in favor.
In favor, okay. Jason?
I would say I'm in favor. The one thing that makes me a little apprehensive is definitely the sound. They talked about the sound of the beepers and the development itself. And it's an interesting idea to have it facing the industrial park or towards town, I should say. Because that would be going, the sound then would be traveling technically away from any residential at the moment. So I think that's an interesting concept for one. So I don't know if there's any actual answer to that or if that's really going to change the entire scope of the project itself. The other avenue is obviously the berm, the idea of the berm. That's been kind of my concern was, I mean, traffic obviously is a concern. But just the noise level that's going to be happening, it's a lot of, it's a lot of bays. I mean, 35 truck bays. I'm only assuming that because they have 35 truck bays, they're going to be using 35 truck bays. So I don't know if that's something that we should be looking at is potentially the idea of some kind of a berm or something that would prohibit more inline side of sound? Or what we could do at that point? Just my thoughts.
Okay. Larry?
I've got no comments.
Jeff?
I guess my comment is I hate to see deferment of improvements to the length of township on the tarmac to the curbing, if not the sidewalk, until partition. I've got some reservations about that. This gets back to how we're burdening property owners with doing this. I'm going to vote for this project, but I have reservations about the process that's allowing us to defer this stuff even though the traffic is going to be there.
I'm a proponent. You know, the traffic is an issue. We talk a lot about the traffic. And, you know, it's one of the things that I'm hoping the city council is focused on and that the priority's there. I mean, of course, our job is to do these based on code, right? But these other things also impede on our own families that are here as well. So I'm always concerned about that. I think that it's a great project. I think they've been considering in a lot of ways and making sure they make some adjustments to that. I'm not exactly happy about deferment, but at least we have something in place. The last project, we didn't have something in place and it would have never gotten done. So I'm happy that there's something in place to make that happen later. I'm also excited about the employees. And I get that we have a lot of conversation, but that's actually what brings the economy up and actually creates the spending to happen to be able to do the things that we need to do here. And for the longest time, we've been saying yes to variances or exceptions to the industrial park and because they don't meet the employee need. And the last three projects have met that. And I think that's really good because there's a lot of good growth there. So I'm a proponent of it.
Thank you. I too am a proponent. I think that my biggest concern with all of the last few projects has been traffic. I think traffic is horrible now. I think that adding all of the new truck traffic and people using 99 to get to Stanton, to Caruso and to Columbia Distributing is, as Brian said, there's, somebody's going to come along and say, this is unbearable. Can't live with this. And they're going to do something about it. But that's going to take more than the City of Canby. I think that's going to take the state of Oregon, which controls 99. A lot of this is the county, which is, as far as I can tell, the biggest impediment. But again, I am a proponent. I will be voting for it.
One comment?
Sure.
Just in a previous life, on a different commission, I was in a situation where traffic on a state highway resulted in curtailment of a development and a number of developments. So that I think as Brian mentioned, it's, if it's not happening now, it's a possibility for the future that that could become an issue. And it could become the state saying, no, you can't do that. At least in my experience, that's what happened.
And that's a good point. Because if we get to that point, it's almost like, oh, now it's too late. It's kind of one of the things we were talking about at the last meeting is the idea that we can outrun ourselves a little bit, obviously, on some of this stuff.
Well, we know how bad it is on 99 now. I don't know what the level of service is on 99. I can see that in this traffic DIA, we're hitting a level of service C, which is like the minimum acceptable in my experience at Sequoia and 99. That's where we're at. We're still acceptable, but we're not now. In my previous jurisdiction, our solution was that to just, was just to lower what's acceptable. I'm not suggesting that here at all. That's what happened there. We said, well, C, we can't make C, so let's go to F. F is now acceptable. That's happened too, so.
Common core traffic.
Not good.
Larry?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but traffic has been a big concern of ours for quite some time. We keep worrying about what is happening here in Canby. And I think it pales in comparison to what the state is going to do when they put tolls on I-5 and 205. That traffic has nowhere to go but 99E. And I don't think this has, or all the construction we've had here recently will have any impact like that will have on it. So that's something definitely consider about when you go to vote for the crackpots in Salem.
I'm glad you have, don't have much of an opinion on that.
I happen to agree with it.
Just saying. Good for you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve this request from Stanton Furniture for DR 19-03.
One second.
Oh, favor say aye.
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 Posed?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did you say 1903?
DR... DR 19-03.
Isn't it 1902?
1903.
Okay, on the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry. There, it's, I've got two different numbers. I see where you're...
Just making sure we're clear, public record.
So standing, 1903 or 1902?
What page are you on, the staff report?
I'm looking at the...
Yeah, it's two different numbers.
First page. So it says here on Republican, and then under final decision...
Oh, you're looking at the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look at the agenda. If 1903 is correct, the final decision is incorrect. It should be changed in 19-03. And your final findings should be on page 242 of the staff packet.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
So we'll take one more round of this. These are the final written versions of the previous rural decisions. Do we have to vote again on this?
Are you talking the final findings?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I raise a quick question? On the deferment of the sidewalk and landscaping on the area on that slide that's below the area that's not being developed, it's got a limit of development. That's condition number 20. We need to make that slight amendment to that condition.
Oh, yeah.
So that we clarify that for them, that we're not having the sidewalk go all the way down to Township Road or the planter strip. Just the street itself will be improved. The curb and the street will be improved.
Is that the 12-foot width there?
They're dedicating right-of-way the full distance. And actually, all the right-of-way we'll ever need along Township Road as well.
Yeah, so it's going to be the actual, but it's just no sidewalk. It's just missing a sidewalk.
Yeah, now, there isn't any improvements on Township Road proposed except at the intersection.
Right.
The radius, so that they can turn properly onto the existing rural road at that location. But, yeah. And that's just a really minor little tweak. But I thought I'd better put it out here while you're approving the written findings so we can make that tweak to those.
Well, I have a question about that then. So we're literally just deleting a sidewalk?
It tapers, it stops right there, yes.
At the blue line?
At the blue line, properly, until the remainder...
But the road improvement is still in place?
That's still in place. The bicycle lanes, the planter strip and sidewalk will all be along Malino, South Malino Road to right here.
And then on Township, there is no curb? And no, it's not going beyond the intersection?
Correct, not until it gets developed.
Not even a shoulder, technically?
Correct.
I mean, it's just, that's just a...
A tapered 30 or 40-foot radius coming to taper to the existing pavement that's there.
I just think it's bizarre there's no sidewalk, sorry. I just find that a little weird.
There will be, future.
But we don't know when. That's the only issue. And I mean, it could be five to 10, who knows how many years, right? It concerns me a little bit as it does Jeff, I think.
I'm also concerned about, and I voted for this and will without this, but I, you know, the lack of roadway improvement on Township is a concern to me.
This was the biggest concern for staff without a doubt and was debated back and forth and back and forth. We had the city attorney in meetings with us. And basically, it all comes down to a matter of nexus and proportionality and trying to understand that there's always a balance in how much you require and how much you don't and making sure that it's proportional to the impact. This project is providing quite a lot of improvements. We're asking for a right-of-way on three collector streets around a developing site. And part of the issue is that it always raises this when they aren't developing the entire property. There would be improvements on Township Road absolutely for certain if they were developing the entire property. There'd be no question. It's that that raises that question. When you're in large industrial properties, that's still a pretty big piece of property remaining yet to develop. And that will trigger the rest of the improvements.
Yeah, but that's where the concern lies, is that how long are we going to wait for that, right? And I'm sure you guys debated a lot of that as well. And that's why even at least on South Malino Road, it would seem that the consistency would be there if we continued that down to the corner, radius it around. Obviously, the South Township project, I'm not sure how much we can push on this. But the idea behind these companies coming and developing in these areas is because it's going to work for them too. So this is all a negotiation. That's what this is. So really, it's like how hard-nosed does the city want to be with private enterprise coming in here? That's what it comes down to. And how much is it worth to a company? So if we have enough people that are concerned about traffic, and it sounds like everybody is here, it would seem that that would be something that would be pushed right out in the front for us. And that's just my opinion.
We're also kind of running into what the government of the City of Canby is willing to pay for.
to pay for.
Correct.
And there's other ways that these things could be done, but we're choosing to do it through enterprise. And so, we're stuck at the speed with which enterprise moves. And there's other ways it could be done, but we, our government has chosen not to do it that way.
They haven't, and part of it is because obviously the county versus city road projects versus Highway 99, which is state, you know? And so, there's all this kind of stuff that you guys have to work with that, you know, I don't envy, by the way, at all. But, again, I'll always go back to the whole process of negotiation because this is something where we are working with a private enterprise to build something that they're obviously doing because it's going to benefit them. It also benefits the city of Canby. But, again, we can go back and forth because that's just part of the negotiation. So, I think for the citizens of Canby that are currently here or that live here now, really, it feels like that should be like the first priority. We should really be pushing that.
Okay, thank you. We will now take a vote on the final written versions, and so, I will entertain a motion to approve once again, DR-19-03 for Stanton Furniture.
Mr. Chair, I guess I want to just interject. It sounds like I'm hearing a lot of discussion about a possible amendment. And I don't know if Commissioner Taylor wants to submit an amendment or not.
Well, I would. I think that we should actually amend this to continue, at least on South Malano Road, finishing out the road project. That's my amendment, instead of the defer.
I'll second that for a vote.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Posed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, the nays have it. Then we will move on to, again, the final decision for approval of Stanton Furniture, DR-19-03.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Nay.
There you have it. Items of interest from planning staff?
We indicated on the agenda that we don't have any applications for our next regularly scheduled meeting on February 10th. We would like to potentially consider using February 10th as a work session. We're going to be hard-pressed to prepare some material ahead of time for you. We may not get it until the meeting, but the topic is to start looking at some text amendment dealing with small cell 5G cell towers that are coming in and populating our city right-of-ways with their new equipment and how we're going to address that because currently, it's kind of carte blanche unless we get some standards on how they can use our right-of-ways for what is coming rapidly across Canby and everywhere else in the nation to provide 5G service.
Okay, so, you do want to have a...
Sounds like a meeting.
So, you do want to have a meeting on the 10th?
We're anticipating a work session to bring information to you to review the small cell technology wireless, as well as potentially adjusting the building height that was recently approved in the code amendments for the R2 zone and potentially how height is defined in the code, which was just touched on in the code amendments that came before you last fall.
So, same, same time, seven, seven o'clock here?
Yep.
Okay, his room or upstairs? You'll let us know.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
And the reason why we're proposing the work session, just as an FYI, is that the city council has scheduled a work session on the same topic matter for the wireless for March 18th. So, we want to give the planning commission members a chance to listen and review and also participate in that joint work session afterwards so that you know what's coming ahead of time as well.
For what it's worth, I may get rocks thrown at me by my fellow commissioners, but here, here for the work sessions, and I think more would be better.
Yes.
I might also mention that this is the week, the 29th of the planning commission training down in Salem, and we do have you registered if you guys can make it.
The date on here says Wednesday, January 27th. Of course, today being Monday, the 27th.
Right, so Wednesday, the 29th, 5:30 to 7:00, I believe.
And then the following day?
And the following day is an all-day, mostly planning staff-type meetings and...
But you've got us booked into the two-hour session, right?
The Wednesday evening one. That's geared specifically for planning commissioners.
Okay, any items of interest or guidance from us to them? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Or adjourned?